Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Woburn City Council on June 9, 2025. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Please silence your cell phones. If you can, please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Higgins, if you will call a vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Present.
Counsel DeMambro.
Present.
Counsel Ferruo.
Present.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Present.
Counsel Papalatto.
Present.
Counsel Toro.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present. Make a motion to dispense with the reading in the previous meeting's journal and approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That passes.
This meeting is being held pursuant to Woburn Municipal Code Title III, Article I, Section 3-3C, and to Rule 31 of the Rules and Orders of the City Council. The President has called a special meeting of the City Council from Monday, June 9, 2025 at 7:00 PM, and if necessary, Tuesday, June 10, 2025 at 7:00 PM, in the City Council chambers for the purpose of reviewing and conducting a public hearing and taking action as determined by the City Council on the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Before we start, I'd like to make a disclosure that I have a family member on the Woburn Police Department. Is there anyone else with disclosures?
President, let's send a disclosure for the planning board.
Anyone else? That's it. Thank you.
I just want to make a statement that a report received from the Committee on Finance with the fiscal year 2026 budget as follows. Back for action.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that the updated budget information from the Woburn Public Schools be received made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is the public hearing itself.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
The motion in the second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Communication dated June 5, 2025 to President Dillon was received from Michael Maurenin, 937 Main Street as follows. "Good evening, President Dillon and council members. My name is Michael Maurenin, and I reside at 937 Main Street. I would like you all to please approve the mayor's budget before you tonight. Thanks again for all you do for this awesome city of Woburn. Looking forward to working with you and all in the future. Thank you." Further, communication dated June 8, 2025 was received from Jennifer Baker Jones for Sherman Place, excuse me, for Sherman Terrace regarding the 2026 WPS budget and schools' capital budget.
Mr. President, if I may also add, for the purposes of the public record, an email from Rachel Kuhberry dated Friday, May 30, on budget documentation to follow up for the school department, and then an email Monday, June 2, administration positions in the school budget. I'll make a motion that all four communications received made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel DeMers. There's a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
The public hearing is opened. If anyone would like to speak, they can come to the microphone. For all those in the general public, if you could please sign in, print your name and address, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Concanon, how are you tonight?
I'm well, Mr. President. How are you?
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Good evening to you and the members of the council. Appreciate your time this evening to discuss the presentation of the proposed fiscal '26 annual budget for the city of Woburn. Just to recap briefly on the process, as you know, I submitted a letter on May 20 attached was the proposed budget. I will not read that whole letter again. But just to recap the process, as you'd expect, we invited all of the department heads in the city of Woburn earlier this spring to submit their proposed FY26 requests, proposed budget. We reviewed that. We then met with each of those departments, many of them several times, a couple of departments, really just one or two meetings. We then prepared what we thought was a reasonable proposed budget for the city council's consideration, trying to balance the needs of the departments who serve the city, balanced with the impact of any spending on the residents and the business taxpayers. So again, on May 20, we presented that budget to you. I read my lengthy letter. We then had a series of meetings here with each department head where they were allowed and encouraged to present their budget, talk about their needs, talk about the accomplishments, obviously, of the last year. And I think it's safe to say that all of the departments were appreciative of the council's consideration of their requests, but there were instances when a particular department would have wanted more money in their budget. And I think we all understand that, and we heard their concerns, we heard their arguments as we did during the process. And ultimately, we did feel that the budget we presented to you was in the best interest of the city, notwithstanding some of those disagreements about the amounts in each department. The theme, and I said this during the prior discussions, the theme of this fiscal year was a maintenance year. And what I mean by that is, in the previous year, this city, this council, my office, each department, and of course, all the people in Woburn and all the taxpayers, made a significant investment in the city of Woburn. FY 2025 was a significant investment. And it carried with it a burden on the taxpayers. So I think everybody was mindful that this FY '26 year could not be a year for enhancement or additional advancement. We need to balance the impact on the taxpayers. So the message throughout the process, and reiterated during the committee meetings, was that this was, in fact, a maintenance year budget. And when I say maintenance, it's not the same thing as the same dollars spent as last year, and I know, I know you know this. You know, maintenance includes those built-in year-over-year costs that are contractually obligated or legally mandated. So when I wrote the letter and we broke down the various budget drivers and increase drivers, just a quick highlight, you know, the schools, as we know, is the biggest cost center in the city. The increase in the school budget year-over-year was $5.6 million. And again, that's maintenance. That's driven by the previously settled collective bargaining agreements. That was $4 million in and of itself, simply paying the people who worked here last year their contractually obligated increases. Another significant increase in the schools was the $900,000 increase in special ed transportation, legally obligated. Not much we could do about that. On the city side, again, looking at it from a maintenance perspective, we had six of the seven outstanding collective bargaining agreements settled in the first several months of this fiscal year, and that led to $2.7 million increase year-over-year across the city. We're about, well, I shouldn't say we're about, we're hoping to settle the seventh of those outstanding contracts. Six are settled, one left to go. We'd like to settle that as soon as possible, and we have money allocated in the mayor's salary adjustment account for that seventh settlement. Another significant driver in our maintenance year operating budget is a $2.9 million increase in healthcare costs across the city, including school employees and city employees. $2.9 million, something we're obligated to meet. As I mentioned in my letter and we talked about previously, this is an issue we have to revisit, and it's something that we would do together, the mayor's office, the council, and the unions. We would sit down to try to figure out a way to bring this number down. $2.9 million each year increase is not sustainable. So I'm going to be looking forward to working with the council and the city employee unions on trying to find ways to revisit our health insurance plans and perhaps save money for both the employees and the city. There were a couple of other drivers in the budget we referenced before. Increased retirement costs, an increase of $670,000 year-over-year. Medicare tax, $200,000, and maturing debt. Another driver, we talked about this in committee, and I'm pleased to see the fire chief is here as well. He and the auditor and others can assist in any additional questions the council might have as we go forward. But another driver is the addition of five, let's strike that, seven firefighters, who we would like to see go into the academy as soon as the late October class, which would bring them out just in time for our long anticipated, eagerly anticipated arrival of ladder two. This council thankfully supported that request several years ago, and that's how long it takes to build a ladder. But it's finally coming. We've seen pictures. It's being made. So when that comes in late December, the goal is to have these firefighters out, and we'll have the staffing to finally have a second ladder in the city of Woburn, something we've been trying to do for a while now. Fortunately, because of the BLS ambulance receipts, we're able to offset a significant portion of the cost of those additional firefighters. We're fortunate here in Woburn, we have an outstanding fire department that delivers high-level service, and we are busy. And when we're busy, there are revenues that are generated. We're fortunate to be able to use some of those to offset these costs. So those are the drivers of this maintenance year budget. Fortunately, because of the way we've been budgeting, the way we've been managing the money, the good news is, when we went out to bid recently on Station 4, Fire Station 4, we were reaffirmed as a AAA bonding city. So that's the good news. I'm very pleased to report that. That will help us as we move forward with this bonding, as well as any subsequent bondings to follow. I know that the item in front of us tonight right now is the operating budget, and I know we're going to get to the capital budget, and I know there's interest in the capital budget, not only in the council but in the audience. I would just like to reiterate the point that in the current school department budget, which is approximately $96 million, there is $5 million allocated for facilities to take care of our school buildings. So when you see the capital budget and you see a number of $300,000 in a line item for facilities, just know that that's not the only, that's not the total amount of money we're spending on our school buildings. So I just wanted to point that out. It is in your school department budget packet. There is that line item for $5 million for facilities. So I just wanted to remind you of that for the subsequent follow-on discussion. So at that point, I would say that's the extent of my presentation tonight. Again, we have the auditor here, and we have additional department heads, if there are any follow-on questions beyond what we discussed initially and in committee. With that, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing the public input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Concanon. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Anybody would like to speak on this? Sing. Here we go. How are you tonight? If you'd just sign in, state your name and address, please.
All right. Rachel Kuhberry, Sixth Blake Street, Ward 4, Anna Hurd Wyman parent. I'm here to speak mostly in regards to the school budget. As you heard from Mr. DeMers, I have a lot to say about the budget this time around, both in how we document it, how the public's engaged, and other things. But tonight, I'm going to focus pretty narrowly on two issues. One point from the operating budget, and then a larger issue from the capital budget. Regarding the operating budget, I want to clearly support the central registration staff that's an add in the school budget. These staff are critical to supporting our phased redistrict and placing new enrollments where they need to go. From a family and caregiver perspective, they'll also make the transition to Woburn Public Schools more seamless and error-free than it currently is. So as we do the redistrict, we're moving our first group of kids this summer, and the district's currently working on planning what the phased redistrict looks like as they voted on the end maps for the final result of the redistrict. What people are hoping, people, parents, many of the parents in the caregiver advisory group, many parents throughout the whole redistricting process have asked, can't we just move new students? And the district's really looking into doing that as they continue the redistrict past this first batch. That's not going to be possible without central registration staff. You know, I live right on the line of the Malcolm White and the Hurd Wyman, and when you look at the redistricting process, it's moving kids from the Hurd Wyman to the Malcolm White, and we don't want to take the crowding issue that's at the Hurd Wyman and put it at the Malcolm White. We need staff to make sure that doesn't happen. And if we have staff for central registration, we have the capacity to put our kids where they need to be, and so that we have the space that's used, and we don't have kids overcrowded in some spaces and available space across the district. So know that those positions are really important, and I'm glad they're still in the budget. The next area that I'm going to talk about is the capital expense and how we plan and develop our capital budget. So specifically, I'm concerned that we have little forward-thinking and real planning for our school capital budget. The school department submitted a near $12 million request to the mayor, and yet I do believe that was too much for one year, and I'll get into that in a minute. But the mayor just included $875,000 for the schools in his budget. So they requested $12 million, and $875,000 got in. So it's slightly more than what was allocated last year at $850,000. That's actually just a 3% increase that covers inflation, but doesn't address the deficits from years past. So it's simply not enough to maintain the capital needs, including facilities of our schools. So let's look, you know, I said, okay, that I don't think is enough. Let me look at the five-year plan. What are we planning to do? So the city has a five-year capital improvement plan on the website, which is, quote, "outdated and incomplete," according to Mayor Concanon, who I emailed about it to try to get the current one. I haven't seen a current one. All I have is what's on the website, and it shows that the city has allocated $0 to Woburn Public Schools for capital projects past FY '24. So obviously, that's not true. I just told you what was provided last year and what's in the budget for this year. But what are we planning? I don't know. So the school department also has a five-year plan, and that includes wildly uneven asks from $12 million for this FY '26, and then it comes down to $84,000 in the future years. So this plan doesn't include regular expenses such as technology replacements So this plan doesn't include regular expenses such as technology replacements or maintenance projects. So I don't really think their plan is complete either. So without capital planning on the school side or the city side, we can't effectively maintain our buildings or plan for expected expenses such as technology and maintenance, let alone unexpected expenses. And now for an example. So I'm going to give you guys an example. It's really narrow, but I think it will help us with like real numbers of what I'm talking about and the concerns I have as we move forward. So that example is student Chromebook devices. So what we have for student Chromebook devices, in case you don't know, is everyone in grades six through 12 gets one Chromebook to use. So that's all of our students. So it's about 2,200 students who have 2,200 Chromebooks. We also have multiple Chromebook carts at our elementary schools. You might remember that we actually need the Chromebooks to do MCAS and many other school things. And then we have iPads in our early elementary classrooms. So it's easy to see with just those three buckets I gave you that we have easily a million dollars' worth of technology in students' hands. So that's students' technology in our schools. That's not counting things like projectors, staff devices, specialized special ed technology like AAC devices. That's just our student equipment. So the district asked for $630,000 to replace student devices that were purchased at the beginning of the pandemic, more than five years ago. About 10% of that request was granted by the mayor as he included $61,000 in the budget for this item. So they asked for 630,000, and 61,000 went in. So that's just a little less than 10%. So we'll replace a little less than 10% of the student devices that are at end-of-life. 90% will move on. And so how many devices did we replace last year in student equipment? Well, just looking at the budget document, it looks like we didn't replace any because the capital budget last year for technology in the Woburn Public Schools omitted any money for replacement of student devices. So at this rate, if we're going to stick with that $61,000 number being the right number, it's going to take us 16 years to replace all of the student technology that we're using. So I don't think anyone in this room has a computer, iPad, Chromebook, a cellphone, anything that's 16 years old. And so these devices also travel with kids. They're taking a beating, and they only take software updates for so long. So even if the device is intact, we do hit a point where it's not possible to extend it to end-of-life. So they just need to be replaced on a planned replacement cycle, and the district needs money to do that. So the way that most other districts manage this is by including technology replacement costs as part of their regular capital budget. We should be replacing technology every single year in order to distribute the cost, so we don't have a year like this year when the schools come to you with a request for $630,000 just to replace student devices. But alas, we didn't do that this year, and we didn't replace anything last year, and now here we are at 10% needs met in our budget moving forward. So we're digging ourselves into a hole that's going to be very expensive to get out of. We need to manage this by planning these expenses and following a planned replacement cycle for technology. I should never see a capital improvement plan that includes $0 for technology replacements for the school or any other department because these are expected expenses. So we keep talking about this pay-as-you-go budget, and I really believe the student technology example should fit into the pay-as-you-go budget. It's a regular expected expense. And frankly, the school has bigger requests coming. They've already requested millions of dollars for safety and security features. They have a $4 million request coming in a few years for rooftop units at the Malcolm White, and a $5 million request for a new roof at the high school. So while we wait to decide on new construction, schools, and MSBA SOIs, we need to maintain and even improve the state of some of our current schools. If we need to hold things together with duct tape to get us to a final goal, I can get on board with that. But right now, we don't even have the final goal outlined. We have no capital improvement plan that addresses the real needs of our real facilities. These big things, they're not pay-as-you-go, but what are they? What is the funding mechanism for them? I hear support to figure this out, but I don't see action. We need to do something. We can't continue to fund our schools at 10% needs met and then complain when we don't have the outcomes we hope for. These discussions need to be public, too, not just quiet meetings with some people behind closed doors. Issues like this need to be discussed in public meetings. The community needs to know what's going on and needs the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Good evening. My name is Emily Peters. I reside at Forest Summit Street, and I'm a proud Reeves parent. I urge you to prioritize the capital budget for funding vital repairs, especially roofs, playgrounds, and structural issues. Critical safety and structural concerns identified by the school department are missing from this year's proposed capital budget. While the school departments ask of $12 million to not prioritize what is needed most or give a long-term plan of action, ignoring these issues like roofs, playgrounds, and other structural issues will not save money. We cannot keep kicking the can down the road. If we continue to ignore these issues, what will be the result? We will have massive pileups of expenses that will become crushing financial burden for all taxpayers. The Alta Vesta roof is pouring water into trash barrels. The shamrock roof is beyond repairs and duct tape. The Malcolm White playground is an absolute safety hazard. As a Reeves parent, I want to mention our roof is on its way out, along with the Malcolm White and the high school, which was mentioned last week. The school district has verbally recommended an overlay that would buy 15 years. This was not in the $12 million proposal, nor in the city's five-year plan. However, a replacement roof for the high school was in the five-year plan. The overlays for roofs are being looked into. Once again, putting off maintenance will turn into major repairs. I ask you to consider our schools, supporting our kids, and push towards fixing facilities now. We must ensure the safety of children and staff and protect these valuable city assets. Please pay attention to this vote. Our community's future and finances depend on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Papalatto, you were looking to say something?
Yes, just a couple of words around one of the budgets, and that's the fire department budget. So I've often heard that the fire department in Woburn is second to none, and it is second to none. I take my hat off to you, chief, for everything that you do and the way that your men work professionally. Unfortunately, I've had to use this, your services on a few occasions, and it was, you knocked it out of the pocket. It was very professionally done, and they did a great job, and I take my hat off to you. I will be fully supporting the fire department budget tonight, just in advance. But I do feel like over the last several years, we've made large investments in the fire department between the new fire station, the new fire headquarters, a couple of the fire stations that were in the works of building out the aerial truck that you mentioned earlier, and then we've added, to your point, seven additional firefighters. So I feel like we've really gone full bore in supporting the fire department, and I think it was needed, and I fully support all that. But what I would ask is that going forward, we kind of push this into a maintenance mode for a little while and kind of look in other areas. You know, I know some people have made comments about capital budgets in different other areas. I just ask that we take a look at going forward and to make sure that we're covering our other needs as well. Thank you.
Do you get any response? Are you good?
Thank you.
You're good?
Good.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment with what Rachel was saying. You know, having an increase of 10% saying that it's not sustainable for the schools, that you need more every year. Last year, our seniors ended up with such an increase in their taxes that some are extremely, that they are struggling to pay for their rent. They're struggling to pay for food. So saying that we need more than 10% every year to sustain the schools in addition to the capital plan, I think is being, in my view, unreasonable and not thinking of the whole picture. I support children wholeheartedly. I am the, when I'm not here at city council, I am the director of faith formation and religious education for 175 students at St. Charles. I absolutely love working with the children. I love how creative they are, how the unconditional love, how much they love to learn. I know the importance of supporting them in what they need. But we must balance it. We must balance it because of our seniors as well. We are not just here looking at a budget for the school, which is now $96 million, not counting what needs to be done and the couple million dollars that requests will be coming to us in the next couple months. And I'm sure that we will support that because we talked about the need for a roof at the Linscott and a roof for the shamrock, or at least patching it. And the mayor has said that they're out figuring out exactly what it's going to cost, so they can get that final amount so that the roofs can be repaired. I think we have to look at the whole picture. This past year, I mean, excuse me, last week, we had the VOKE come in. They were promised $2 million of help from the state. They were cut to 1 million without them even realizing it, and they didn't even know until the end. That was $1 million less than they had planned. So they scurried, and they were able to put pieces together to be able to make their budget work. And I think this is something we will be looking at for next year. Because going 10% year after year is not sustainable for our seniors. We cannot keep putting this tax burden on them. We have to think of the whole picture. In addition to helping the children, getting what they need, they said, the VOKE, once again, they said, unless I'm wrong, they said they're getting over $1 million in grants. Wow, what a grant writer. And I know we have good ones as well here in the city. I think someone needs to go talk to them, their grant writer, and find out what they're doing, so that maybe some of that money for the technologies, Rachel, that you're talking about, that they can use that monies for that. And they said that's why they were able to make it, was because of the grants that they were able to find. So once again, as we go through this, it is so important, we cannot just go 10%, 15% to our schools. Do you need it? Yeah, I agree. I do think you need it. But I think we have to think of everyone in the city as well. Are they important, the children? Absolutely, absolutely. They are the future. But we can't get to the point where our budget is so high that our taxes are so high that we are pushing people out of Woburn because it is wrong. We have never been a city where our taxes were so high that it was for the rich only. And I hope that that will not be the case. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? How are you tonight?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Just your name and address, please.
Sure. So I'm Alex Tizell, 5, Majority Lane, Ward Five, and I'm a Malcolm White parent. So I just wanted to thank you all for the hard work on the budget and for all of the advocacy and thoughtful consideration you've put forth for our kids thus far. Also for your consideration of them outside of this committee and your extracurriculars. I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns with the issues in our school left largely unanswered by the proposed budget, issues which I do not hear concrete plans for solutions moving forward. And that's sort of what I want to focus on is solutions, because it doesn't feel good as a parent to hear that, I'm sorry, the answer is to your problem is that we have other problems, and we don't have solutions for those problems either. So I would prefer, I think as a parent, to like hear more creative solutions for all areas of the city and not just kind of pointed at the schools because we are the largest portion of the budget. So over the past four years or so, when parents of public school kids were asked via survey to rate their main concerns with public schools today, parents did not rank academic achievement, college admissions, or test scores as their top priority or concern. In all of these various nationwide surveys, the top parental concern was safety. Safety is broad. There are many ways to look at this. However, at the last finance committee meeting during a presentation from two of school committee members, Vice Chair Chisholm made a comment that stuck with me. In regards to areas of the budget that were not funded in these particular buckets, she expressed her concern with this and stated that she did not want our parents to be scared to send their kids to school. She was talking in reference to a recent consult of our school's safety and evaluation of that. So the thing is, we are scared. To be clear, this is not a comment on the Woburn Public School system and the safety and preparation that they're currently providing. This fear is bred from the reality of the world that we live in today, and this is a nationwide problem, with 72% of public school parents in one of the surveys responding that they're concerned about overall school safety. With violence, and gun violence in particular, being the leading cause of death in today's youth, I think that fear is not unfounded. We cannot change the world we live in. All we can do is take care of our little corner of it. Mayor Concanon spoke to Vice Chair Chisholm's concerns during this meeting. It was not completely clear, and maybe that's for safety reasons, but it sounded to me that he was advocating for the creation of a safety task force, specifically to go over recent recommendations made by that outside safety consultant. I want to urge the mayor to follow through with this plan, and I want to preemptively urge city council to approve the budget items that this task force recommends. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I began my career in the emergency department. During my time at a busy ER in Worcester, I was fortunate to receive specialized advanced disaster life support training. It's basically training in mass casualty and emergency management. During this training, we analyzed the coordinated response to the Boston Marathon bombings. While hospitals, first responders, and law enforcement agencies regularly receive preparation and training on these types of emergency events, we learned that just five months before the marathon, several Boston-area government agencies happened to have received extensive training on responding to mass casualty events. The response to the marathon bombings was admirable and effective. I think it was something like 11 minutes from the time of the first bomb going off to the first patient arriving at an area hospital. That's incredible. The preparation, training, and security measures that came before that event worked to save countless lives that day. Our schools are not a hospital, and the day-to-day is thankfully not a disaster event. However, what stuck with me about the mayor's proposal regarding a safety task force was the opportunity for prevention and training above and beyond what we're currently doing. And this idea is not an original one. There are several urban municipalities that have formed such school safety or emergency preparedness task forces that work with public schools. The focus area of this task force can be moldable. Not only could such a committee provide analyzation and recommendation for current safety measures, which I think is kind of like the intention, but could also be a resource on other types of violence impacting our schools, such as bullying and fighting, something we have recently heard much about regarding our high school, when we've had high school students come to speak about this at school committee meetings. This task force could also investigate and recommend various grants for school safety upgrades and other needed services. I hope to hear more about this task force in the future. Bet you thought you'd get off without me talking about the capital improvements that we need to make to our buildings, but it's a little bit longer. Another interpretation of safety as a main priority encompasses environmental safety for our students. You have, or you will have, heard many environmental safety concerns from fellow parents tonight. I will admit that ranking a safe and accessible playground area seems to fall in priority when compared to school areas with sinkholes or extensive water damage from leaky roofs. However, I did However, I did want to highlight some of the safety concerns with the current state of the Malcolm White playground. This might sound familiar, as the playground has been brought up in regards to capital budget several times. Our playground area at the Malcolm White has existed since the building opened 20 years ago, and the play equipment has reached its expiration date. Much of it is broken. It is completely not accessible to any children with motor differences or special needs. When it rains or snows, our kids are unable to have outside recess due to a large area of the playground being a dirt-covered hill with many exposed boulders, leading up to what we like to call the death slide, because it's kind of very vertical and shoots off. In addition to this, the playground surface is largely made of some sort of bouncy turf material, and it cannot be shoveled off as, when you do, large pieces of the material break off, creating further safety hazards for the kids navigating the area. I know that we have talked about the importance of playgrounds before, but it's research backs that playgrounds and recess are important to kids' overall development, their social development, as well as behavior. Their behavior is drastically better in the classroom when they are able to have access to recess. So this isn't just a time for the kids to get out and play. It is backed by research, the importance of having these spaces. I wish that these were the main issues of the playground, but for me, the biggest issue is both the retention pond that sits next to the playground area that is littered with lost balls, enticing children to come fish them out, as well as the lack of a secure fence around the property. The existing fence is held together with duct tape in several areas, and there's a place where it doesn't meet the ground, and so large rocks have just been pushed there to keep the kids inside the area. Several kids have told me tales of climbing under that fence area during recess and venturing out into the parking lot and busy road, or into the parking lot and towards the busy road. None of this truly matters, as the worst part of the playground is that it's currently missing a large section of gate that used to exist right next to the piece of the property that meets the fence of the retention pond. So even though the fence is damaged, it doesn't matter because we have a large space that is just open and the kids can freely get out. I realize I carry much from my previous career experiences, but I must point out that another leading cause of death in children are accidents and drownings. The setup of our playground is very disjointed, and so there is not a single spot on the playground area where an adult can visualize the entire thing at one time. Not only is this a setup for school-based violence, as kids statistically have worse behavior when not supervised by an adult at recess, but to me, it sounds like a nightmare set up as the play area is not secured. I know times are tight. I know we have a duty to be fiscally responsible and careful. However, these areas are vitally important and deserve attention and consideration. The kids that we are tasked with and elected to protect deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Yes, sir. Come step forward, just state your name and address and sign in, please. How are you tonight?
Thank you. My name is Ryan Murphy. I'm at 22 Valley Road, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to attend and address you this evening. I'm coming as a, as a parent of two children currently at the Hurd Wyman for the next few days, and then the beginning of next academic year will be, we've been redistricted to the Malcolm White. And I'm very grateful for the wonderful community at the Malcolm White. But one, one thing that I, that I feel like there's some amount of momentum for us as a community right now is prioritizing the education of our children in this wonderful community of Woburn. And I think that Mayor, when, when you were running, that was for my wife and I, our number one reason why we supported you was for your commitment to education of our children. And I, I think that in determining what we're going to do to fund our capital budget for education, it is such a wonderful opportunity to send a message of how much we prioritize the education in our, in our community. Not only does, you know, whether it's fixing a leaky roof, replacing five-year-old technology, or building a new playground that, as we just heard, is pretty sorely needed, you know, education, like this is not just a line item. It's like a foundational aspect of our community. Any family moving is going to look at their schools and how schools allocate the resources and how cities allocate resources to their schools. And businesses want to invest in communities that invest in their children. My, as a personal example, my two kids at Hurd Wyman, one's in kindergarten and one's in second grade. And I think their, their closest friendships, for my son, his closest friendships have been formed while playing soccer before, during, and after school on the playground at the Hurd Wyman. And thankfully, he, he has a confidence that I think will, will carry him through in a place where he won't have that playground to form new friendships when he goes to the Malcolm White. But I, I hope that, that other kids are, are going to be just as lucky. But I fear that probably won't be the case. I hope that we can find a way to do what we need to do. I am a firm believer that where there is a will, there's a way. So what do you need and what do you practically expect to happen? If you have Chromebooks that need to be used in the school to do school things, what do you practically expect to happen when you can't replace those? I just don't think it's a, I don't think it's acceptable. I don't think it's possible to assume that you can't have what you need. And I think that we can do better. We can make that happen. And I definitely appreciate the, the terrific balancing act that it must be to manage a city budget. But I, I just, I just believe that there's got to be a way to make sure that we do what we need to for our schools. And whether it's, you know, partial this year and partial next year, but it's, it's got to happen somehow. And we can also address all the other concerns that might happen, you know, as an impact to, you know, higher, slightly higher taxes, which, by the way, I think most people who have children in school or who are looking to move to a community where their children will attend school will understand the trade-off that they would be making in that, in that calculus. And I, I believe that there is a way for that to ultimately kind of be offset by the future investment that happens due to the, the results that happen down the road. So I, I wanted to thank you for your commitment to our community and again urge you to, to really take a close look at what we are doing as a community and how we are going to do what we need to do, whatever it is and whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? How are you tonight?
I'm well, thanks. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good evening.
Can you please state your name and address for the record and sign in?
I will. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Bernice Friedman. I'm a resident of Leonard Street, 56 Leonard Street. I'm a mother of a second grader at the Shamrock School, but I'm here to advocate not just for the Shamrock School, but for all of our schools, while also being sensitive to your concern, Counselor of Fiscal Responsibility. Looking back at this past year, we really should have started the MSBA application process to replace our older schools in North Woburn instead of focusing on temporary modular classrooms for ECP. But here we are, just weeks before the schools will close with no application drafted. During this past year, I've learned, rather, I've heard about the tours that were scheduled at each school, and I thought it was a great idea to get a fresh look at all of the new and existing issues that have been identified by the 2023 School Building Feasibility Study conducted by Dinesco Design. The report had hundreds of pages of information about each of our 10 schools. I went through it this weekend. Frankly, the evidence is overwhelming about the existing problems at our schools. These are properties that we, the taxpayers, have paid for. The report identified mechanical issues that, quite frankly, are beyond my knowledge, electrical issues, structural issues, and even issues related to landscaping. Bottom line is, we need to fund the proper maintenance of our schools because we are all stockholders on these properties. But I'm disappointed to see that once again, our capital budget only has $300,000 for district-wide maintenance of the 10 properties. That is the same amount that was budgeted for this year. That $300,000 didn't fix the Shamrock School roof. That was one of the issues identified by that report. According to my principal, Mr. Clark, there are 12 known problem areas throughout the school, and I brought some pictures just to show everybody what it looks like for our kids and our teachers and staff to go in this building every day. 12 of these. 12 of these throughout the school. Would you let your own property be in this shape? Would you have that in your bedroom, in your living room? Would you let that go for years in your own homes? Would you allow buckets in your living room to collect rainwater? This is a problem that didn't happen just this past year. This is an ongoing problem that we need to fix because the roof is the first line of defense against the weather. And there's really two months in the entire year that makes sense to fix the roof, and that is when the school is closed. I wish we are here right now planning for the fixing of that roof during the summer months because the schools are closing. That's the perfect time to do it. Even if we get the, the grant, Mr. Mayor, in August, I feel it's too late to start the work because the teachers would be going back to school to start cleaning up their rooms, preparing their classrooms for the students to return in September. So I wish this was one of the priority items for this year. But since we don't have that in the capital budget, I guess we'll have to pray that we don't get any more rain or heavy snow in the winter time. We can say that the patchwork should work. Can we really predict that? Can we even predict the weather, how much snow we're going to get in the winter months? The problem with the Shamrock specifically, and forgive me if I might just pour a little sip of water. The problem with the Shamrock roof, and I'm not a, you know, a contractor here, but I understand basics of it, just speaking with my principal, is that the middle part of the school is built with a flat roof. And as you can imagine, if we get feet of snow during the winter months, that's going to accumulate on that flat roof for the entire season until the melting begins. And if you can imagine, water will find its way down, if not through the side of the building, through the cracks in that roof. So to say that it's going to hold up, the patchwork that we did, it's hard for me to believe that. It really is. Because we are in the mercy of Mother Nature. Things happen beyond our control. Beyond just the Shamrock School, I've learned that there are other problems that are happening in other schools. As my friend mentioned, the playground at the Malcolm White, that was one of the projects listed in the school department's capital request. And just to show you, the park, the playground, this is the fence that's being held up by, I don't know, a paint tape? Because the joint, the joint, the, the parts where the fences are connected, there are missing, there are missing parts in this. And there are children that are playing here that if this metal fence would fall on them, can you imagine? Beyond, beyond just that. The surface of the playground, so my daughter goes here for the after-school with the YMCA, so she knows this playground. And the way she described these, to me, they sound like little potholes because the surface of the playground has been really damaged throughout the years. And yesterday, I also went to the Altavesta, and this bright orange cone right in front of the door, it's covering a sinkhole. Can you imagine if a child falls through a sinkhole? I understand that there was a patching job done, but I looked underneath that and the asphalt is already cracked, and it's already settling in. And just outside the school, the only playground that's there, that's, is, it's covered by caution tape because the platform is no longer safe for use. These are just a small example of what's happening in our schools. And I want you to open your eyes and not just look at the numbers because there are people, there are children that go there. I drop off my school, my daughter to school every day, and I look at that splash park that's being built in front of the Shamrock, and it's so difficult for me to be excited about that park because we can't even set a timeline for the Shamrock roof. And quite frankly, the way I count community benefit is to figure out how many people use that property versus that. How many months in the entire year do you think we will benefit from the splash park versus the roof of a Shamrock? How many months out of the entire year? So I recognize that a $12 million ask from the school department for one year is hard to swallow. And, and I realize that it is, it is, it is, you know, unrealistic to approve something like that. But there are very important things that are recommended in that list. And there are safety recommendations and necessary repairs that are included on that list. As a former reporter, I have sadly covered many disasters that resulted in deaths and injuries over the past 18, rather, in the span of 18 years. So I'm asking you to prioritize safety, not just for any other building throughout the city, but also in our schools, because the consequences are far greater than any dollar amount that you will argue in this room. And I encourage you to fund these. If not for FY '26, please work with the school department, school committee, and commit to a more reasonable timeline. Because even the feasibility report said, right in the introduction, the school building performance is directly related to our student performance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernice. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Anyone else? Anyone else? How are you, sir?
I'm well, how are you? Good evening. I'm Jose Olivera, Three in a Two Road. I'm here to speak mostly about the school and the capital budget. I don't think it's fair within our city for us to ever wanna look at pitting different demographics against one another. Each one is equally important, our children, our seniors, everyone in between, our other departments, police, fire, they're all equally important. We all have needs. As a public school teacher, what we're talking about today, that you've heard from many of the residents and parents, about these capital improvement and the capital budget, there is quite a significant difference between not getting an approved curriculum or approved technology, and then having to teach in a school that's falling apart. Quite a difference. Like I said, as a public school teacher, when I have to teach in the school that I teach at, which is not in Woburn, and we have an air conditioning system that is causing mold, that's the importance. It's not whether I get new textbooks for my students, or if I get new calculators to teach my math class, or if we get new Chromebooks to replace those. It's the health and well-being of the educators and the students in that school. I totally understand the tax burden that falls on every single taxpayer within our city. There are fiscally responsible ways to try to help mitigate that for whatever certain band of residents that we need to look at as taxpayers, there are abatement processes that we can change to make sure that some of our people on fixed incomes, that their tax burden isn't significantly increased. We can look at these ways. What I'm concerned with is these facilities problems that we have in our schools, and even our other city buildings. It's not just specific to schools. If these are not addressed more immediate than others, it's going to cause a much larger tax bill down the road and cost for this, because then we'd have to mitigate for mold because of the leaking roofs. I don't know if you all remember, we had a little problem not that long ago in our fire departments, where our firefighters were living in such despicable conditions, and there were so many residents that spoke out about this. And it took a long way to get to that, you know, nice, beautiful firehouse and the additional work that's being done on other firehouses. This is the importance that we need to put into the schools right now as well, because it was terrible that these firefighters had to live there in those times and work there, because these conditions that some of the schools are in are despicable. So I'm just asking that we take a look at what this capital budget process is, not just for the schools, but just for the entire city and the different departments, and we increase the dialogue around this, because that's the big piece that's missing, is there's not enough dialogue to look at where this money's going, how is it getting there? Because we need to fix these facility issues just across the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? How are you tonight?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Mary Paris, Edie Kilby Street. So thanks, everyone, for your time and effort throughout the last several months. I wanna start with a different topic, so please support the full-time hire that the Recreation Department has requested. I appreciate this council revisiting this hire and the potential to add this back into the budget. As you know, the Rec Department provides programming for so many different groups within our community. They provide reasonably priced programs year-round, and with the summer coming, the Rec Department provides really important and fun programs for kids on school vacation. As a parent who stays up till midnight the night that the summer program registration opens up, I can tell you that summer programs start to fill up immediately. By 6:00 AM that morning, you'll find a waitlist for many of the popular programs, and this is because of the hard work that Rory, Brian, and their staff put in to create fun and enjoyable programs at a very reasonable cost. Please support adding to the Rec Department budget so that Rory and team can add a much-needed resource to the staff. I also wanna thank you for your support last week for Northeast Metro Tech. As the parent of a sophomore in the electrical program at the Voke, I echo all of the positive feedback that you all shared the other night. Not a penny is wasted at that school, and given the 1,100 applicants they receive each year for 300 spots, it's clear that we need more state and federal funding for more vocational programming. It's really a life-changing opportunity for so many students. And as a parent to a child at the Malcolm White, I'd also like to ask you to please support the Woburn Public School budget, but I'd like to focus more on the capital budget. We've heard many discussions about the status of our school buildings. The summary is that many of them are in dire need for major repairs, renovations, and in a few cases, complete rebuilds of a brand-new school building. We've heard much of that tonight. The buildings that aren't in dire need require proactive and ongoing maintenance. The feasibility study outlines all of this in great detail, yet there hasn't been any tangible progress made towards action and solutions. I would ask that we revisit the capital budget allocation of only $300,000, as this seems woefully inadequate for the current capital and building issues. We've heard about the issues with multiple schools, yet there is no clear plan or funding in place to address these issues. These buildings aren't just important educational buildings, they are also city assets and investments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
I'll make a motion to close the public-
Second.
A motion and a second to close-
Mr. President?
I'll withdraw.
Yes.
Briefly, before we close-
Please, Counselor Ferrulo.
I know we don't usually get into back and forth, I just wanted to make a statement as far as school security. I don't want people to leave here, all those on home on TV, thinking that Woburn Public Schools are unsafe. Dr. Crowley and Chief Ruffo work in concert constantly. There are two full-time school resource officers, and the past five years of my life, I've spent at the state level, where we deployed millions and millions of dollars into training both school people and public safety agencies to protect that. Always room to improve, always room to move forward. Chief Ruffo participates in a group called NEMLEC, Northeast Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, which has a very well-coordinated school threat assessment and response system that they drill on, they train on, they practice. The Woburn school systems are safe, there's always room to improve, but I don't want tomorrow morning's news to be, Woburn schools aren't safe, I'm gonna keep my kids home. They, they do a really good job at keeping the schools safe. Dr. Crowley and his team, Chief Ruffo and his team, there's always room to improve. There's lots of things we need to get to, but I just didn't want to end this night thinking that the Woburn School's not safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to close the public-
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe that's by roll call, Madam Clerk.
That passes.
I stand corrected. No, that's fine, that's fine.
You called roll call, both.
Okay.
You called roll call. Motion made in second to close the public hearing, roll call. Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor DeMers.
Aye.
Counselor DeMambro.
Aye.
Counselor Ferrulo.
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto.
Aye.
Counselor Toro.
Aye.
Counselor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Did you want me to explain what's gonna happen next?
Please.
It'd be great.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. Next, there'll be a discussion of the page-by-page line items, there'll be motions made stating the page number, and also the city department name as well, and then there'll be a motion to approve.
Thank you.
They're gonna go by section by section.
Mr. President, I'll start off. Make a motion to approve Page One regarding the City Council.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Two regarding the mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Three regarding Community Services.
Second.
Motion and, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Four regarding the auditor.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Five regarding the Purchasing Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Six regarding the Assessor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seven regarding the Treasurer Collector.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Eight regarding the Lot Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
That was a present, correct?
Yes.
So abstention.
I'll make a motion to approve Page Nine regarding Data Processing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Ten regarding the City Clerk's Office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Eleven regarding Election and Registration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Twelve regarding the License Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Thirteen regarding Human Resources.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
You may abstain, right?
I can, yep.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve Page Fourteen regarding the Conservation Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Fifteen regarding Planning Board and Community Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes with one abstention.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixteen regarding the Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seventeen regarding the Sundry Boards.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Eighteen to Twenty-Three collectively regarding the Police Department.
Second.
Abstained. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In two abstention, abstentions?
One, I don't have-
Okay. One, thank you.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Pages Twenty-four to Twenty-seven collectively regarding the Fire Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Twenty-eight regarding Inspection Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Twenty-nine regarding the Sealer of Waits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Thirty-one regarding the Woburn Public Schools, the Northeast Regional Tech, and the Essex North Shore Agriculture and Technical School District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Thirty-two regarding the Engineering Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Thirty-three to Forty-four collectively regarding the Public Works Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Forty-five to Forty-six collectively regarding the Cemetery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Forty-seven to Forty-eight regarding the Board of Health.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Forty-nine regarding the Board of Health Rubbish Removal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
That passes eight to one.
Make a motion to approve Page Fifty for the Council on Aging.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Fifty-one regarding Veterans Benefits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Fifty-two regarding the United Veterans Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Fifty-three, Fifty-four collectively regarding the Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Fifty-five to Fifty-seven collectively regarding the Recreation Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages Fifty-eight to Fifty-nine regarding the Box Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty regarding the Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-one regarding the Commission on Disability, formerly known as the Handicap Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-two regarding the Biotech Commission.
Second.
Second.
All opposed? Any-
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, thank you.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-three regarding the Agricultural Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-four regarding the Traffic Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-five regarding the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-six regarding the Historical District Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-seven regarding our maturing debt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-eight regarding interest temp loans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Sixty-nine regarding the Woburn Retirement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seventy regarding non-contributory pensions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seventy-one regarding unemployment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seventy-two regarding insurance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Page Seventy-three regarding the Medicare Tax.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to approve Pages 74 to 82 collectively regarding the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
We need a five-minute recess.
Make, make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
Motion and a second for a five-minute recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Five-minute recess.